Next time we have to keep the same speed.
Yes.
Okay, roll call?
Yes. President Peng?
Here.
Vice President Romano?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Mo Batel?
Present.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, public law 1975, C-231 sunshine law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 23rd. Members of the public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws of the board and applicable state regulations.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hope all is well with you. As we kind of finished the last couple of board meetings of this year, this is an exciting time. We begin with our one item of celebration where we recognize our staff, our outstanding instructional staff and support staff who really are the fiber and the backbone of what we do here each and every day in the action of educating our students. We're looking forward to a wonderful night in which we are going to be honoring educator and educational services professionals. That recognition is always one of the highlights along with our student recognition, which is going to be taking place in June. We have a wonderful presentation that's been put together and I think I speak for all the members of our administrative team in wishing them, all the recipients, congratulations this year. Next, we are also recognizing the achievements of our students who receive special education instruction and work with the teachers, parents, who receive this type of learning opportunities. We are celebrating Special Education Week, which is going to be the week of May 14th to the May 20th, the week that we're in right now. That will be an official resolution for this agenda. The final piece for the superintendent's report is our approval of policies. These are the second readings of our policies that were done at a previous board meeting right now, as listed. And moving on to our curriculum and instruction report, we have the approval of our evaluation rubrics for both principals and staff. This is mandatory, something that we have to do each and every year. These are evaluation tools which we utilize to evaluate all staff for the purposes of providing constructive feedback to improve our practice, not only as school leaders, but as practitioners in the educational field as well, too. The next part of this is our approval of our 2023 summer school schedule, all of the robust programs that we have that go on in our schools throughout the summer. We have a number of awesome field trips that our students are going to be going on as well underneath curriculum instruction. And last but not least is a list of the professional development and documentation that our staff engage in to improve their instructional practice. I think it's a wonderful piece that we continue to support this and provide great learning opportunities for our teachers and our school leaders. And lastly on this list is our pupil's special services report. This is the information listed for our out-of-district students. And that concludes my portion.
Thank you, Dr. Early. John, PA report?
Yeah. Item one, usual, financial reports. Item two has to do with a lease purchase for financing for a classroom addition at JP Stevens High School. We made the decision, or the board did collectively back in '22, to use a portion, to fund a portion of the projects via short-term lease financing, a five-year lease. So this is reflective of that. So we will be doing that soon. Then we have item three are our traditional contracts. Four is our request for proposals. Item five is coordinated educational services agreement with Camden County. Item six is a specialized legal services agreement. Item seven is our ESIP. We are finally coming back with financing and I must say we got a 3.3% rate when we anticipated four. So that's good news. And then keep going. And item nine is disposal of assets. Ten is cooperative bids. Eleven is our grants. Twelve is non-public aid and thirteen is the transportation report. And that's it.
Thank you. Now we have Board.
Madam President?
Sure, Mr. Shi.
Mr. Toth? Number 10, roofing upgrade. Is this existing or this is new?
This is part of the ESIP?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I got some good news.
That's okay.
Want the good news?
That's all it is. Okay, yeah, continue, continue, good news.
So we got bids today, they've been received. We anticipated the roof costing about $7 million for the portions that are going to have solar panels. It actually came back at 5.5, so we're going to be able to do some additional roofing outside of the solar panel area.
Those guys are going to do the roofing, right?
I'm sorry?
Energy ESIP, as a part of ESIP, they will do the roofing?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Toth, if you can explain ESIP for the public, I know you explained it to me a few days back because people don't know.
Yeah, it's an energy savings incentive program where we can finance upgrades in our property, plant, equipment, you know, mechanical, lighting, boilers. And we're going to save money through efficiency, which we're able to pay a lease payment, so it's cash neutral.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Toth, one more question?
Sure.
Item number two, I thought we were going to add the JMI.
We still can. We're going to do that next month. And we had a conversation with Willence along with Acacia Financial and they said we better to do it next month.
Okay, so are they going to charge us two separate?
No, no, it would not be. We could have a separate hearing on that lease and we could still go to bid at the same time, but we wanted to make sure we got all of our i's crossed and t's, or i's dotted, t's crossed, so to speak.
Yeah, because, why am I asking the questions? Because they charge based on whatever. So if we can combine them together, they only charge us one instead of two.
Right, the idea is that, you know, we have this hearing on the JP lease. Next month, we have another hearing. We're going to need DOE approvals on both projects. We have one, we'll need JP and then we can go out for the lease financing.
Okay, as long as he's a lawyer and a financial planner doesn't charge us twice, that's good.
I'm with you, couldn't agree with you more.
Okay. Anybody else, Board member for a resolution? Discussion? No?
I just had a policy question.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ror. Yeah?
So I was reading down the security and safety policy and it was a recommendation of having one panic button in each building. I know it says minimum, but I'm wondering if we can make it at least two panic buttons? Because I hate to say it, the first people that are in contact are these individuals. If they can't get to the panic button, then nobody is. So I think there should be an alternate panic button. Yep. Just my advice is someone who works in a school building.
Perfect, it's actually, you know, funny you mention that. So the majority of that policy deals with data mapping of our schools, moving from blueprints to a more technologically advanced piece. But that component actually came up in discussions last week with our school safety director, Mr. Cassan, and that's something that we are definitely exploring, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Board member, open discussion, anybody?
I just have one comment, open discussion.
Yeah, sure.
I saw on the agenda, Gail's on the agenda.
That's close, it's not public yet.
Oh, well, then, I'll zip it.
Next.
But I do want to say I love you. I knew you for a year, but it was a great year. Thank you for your service.
Next time.
Shannon, I have something, but two nice things. Really nice things. Okay, I went to the spring concert at JP Stevens. It was Mr. D. Nicola's final concert and it was just incredibly beautiful. Jerry was there, too, he can attest to this. I mean, it was just so well done and he did, you know, you know, the kids are incredible. And they're incredible, you know, with him, together, they're just so outstanding. It was a beautiful thing to attend and I was so happy I went to it, you should have went. It was nice. And then today, today was another one. Today I went, you know, it was, this was in conjunction with the Township of Edison and the Township of East Brunswick. And it was at the boat basin in, you know, the south end of Edison and it was the Battle of Bennetts Island and they unveiled a historical marker, you know, for that particular battle that nobody really knew about it, you know, just two, these two people that were part of the historical society in East Brunswick. They began researching this in, you know, 2020. And then all of a sudden, they found all this good information and they put it, you know, today was the day. But once again, our outstanding band at JP Stevens, they had a group there and of course, Mr. D. Nicola was there and, you know, he was just, it was just like the high point of the whole celebration, you know. It was just a beautiful thing. And, you know, I was so proud of them and I made sure I told them. And, you know, it's really, really something. But it was, you know, it was nice to know that they're beginning to find all these revolutionary sites that nobody knew about, you know, in New Jersey and actually in Edison. I never knew there was an island out there. I mean, I lived here all my life, you know, and all of a sudden there, you know, there's this island that this huge battle was fought on, you know. Interesting, but you learn something every day, don't you? But it was really nice and I enjoyed going. And of course JP Stevens was outstanding along with Mr. D. Nicola. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I had a tight conflict with meetings, so that's why we missed it.
So you could have done this, it's a shame.
Yeah, I know.
That's why I went for you.
I appreciate it.
Well, you went to the Woodrow Wilson.
Yeah, so we went to the Woodrow Wilson.
The talent show, right?
Yeah.
Which we'll talk about more in the next meeting.
Correct.
All right.
Madam President? Yes. So just to echo what Jeannie said, you know, we went to the concert. You know, Mr. D. Nicola's last, the spring concert. And the...
Hello?
The kids did a fantastic job.
They were.
But the other things, we had a student, one of the pieces written by the students and was a beautiful piece. And, you know, the student was the lead, you know, the soloist for that piece. And just shows how talented our students are.
Amazing.
And just to add on top of that, we have changed the middle school schedule, so we have a full-year musical program, you know, for these middle school students. And this is a feeder program to that, you know, to the band. I would say JP Stevens is probably one of the best in the whole country. I'm not exaggerating here. With the feeder program, we'll make it even better. So I'd like to thank Gail and, you know, the administration team for getting that to work and we're expecting to see even better, you know, performance for these musicians. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, I just want to mention that I think all of our summer internship for high schoolers are up on the website. We have, what, two law firms, food vendor architects, plus our own in-house internship. So I would really thank Mr. Shi for his initiative in this and we really need these kind of creative ideas to help our students. I think our, there's already a few high school parents contact me for this. So I think we're all very, very excited that it's out there now. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah, Mr. Shi.
Since you mentioned this, I actually forgot this. The deadline is May 17th, is that correct?
Some of them.
I believe so, yes.
Is it possible we can extend a week or two?
I think I can navigate that a little bit, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, give the kids a little bit of time.
I'll talk to the acting superintendent and hopefully he can figure it out.
Please, just two weeks. Give them some time to apply, thank you.
One week after the long weekend, maybe, because everybody, people are on vacation. All right, anything else? Okay, public comments?
Just in time.
First of all, welcome back, Vankit. Very nice to see you again.
What a timing.
So sorry, I had to complete my children program before I come here, so it's ended at seven.
Perfect timing.
So this time I start with kudos to the business administrator and I would like to see more savings the way that you said, I heard on the way while driving $1.5 million. Especially why I want to call you out is the other side of the chair, the business administrator of township, has awarded a million-dollar contract to her husband's company without bidding. So I think the bar is very high here. So you guys are bringing transparency. There is one more thing. There is another $4, $5 million contract. Three vendors submitted the bids and two withdrew. So the only one guy got the bid. So I think BOE seems, you guys are doing a fantastic job. So thank you for bringing the savings and keep, deliver those things so that rest of the department should be shameful that you guys are doing the bidding, savings. At least it may cost $10 more or less, doesn't matter. So nonetheless, thank you for that. The second thing that I have to question on the same note, the last year Finance and Facility Committee, that whoever approved the middle school gym, that how can we forget not having bathrooms or restrooms in a new gym? If a neighboring town's basketball or baseball teams comes and they play in our gyms, we don't have bathrooms in those new gyms? Who approved it? Bural, I'm looking at you, I know that you're not the guy, but hopefully dig it out and let us know that who approved the gym and who is that architect? And ban that architect because I have never seen a guy building with multimillion-dollar gym and not having a bathroom for the kids. So this is a bit sensitive. The third one is JPS, school security issues. And I'm told that the administration knows two, three weeks before there was an incident and there was some negligence. And there was another trespassing two weeks back. I think Dr. Alderley, I have sent an email about that. An out-of-state kid has come and has beaten one of our high school kid and there was no psychological evaluation done by the school. And the school only complained about trespassing after that kid arrested, but there was no mention of the kid was beaten. How can we forget about the victims that were beaten on the school premises who are not part of the case? The parent has to chase the detective and the school. And I hate to say this, couple of building admins, principal and vice principals, they were trying to confuse the kid to give a wrong statement. A kid was beaten by somebody and you guys are forcing a kid to give and confusing that kid? I think, Dr. Alderley, I seriously think that you guys should investigate that further, that how many breaches happened? Why the victims are not getting psychological evaluation? Why are we forcing the kid to give a falsified or underdures kind of thing? So if you don't look into it, and I'm at least glad that I haven't sent my elder kid to the JP, now I'm deciding that I'm not sending my younger one to the JP as well. It's no longer a safe school. Let it be for the teachers, let it be for the students. If we don't secure our students and teachers... Last year we heard something about EHS, that is a different level, but this trespassing and the negligence of not handling is not acceptable. I may be wrong, please correct me on that. And there are some parents who are telling TJMS teachers shortage and there are some classes are conducted more than six months. Elective, there are no teachers. For cooking and others, some of them are remote classes. How can anybody learn cooking remote? A cooking class? So it's been going for a while, sir, and I have asked the parent to reach out to you because obviously they're scared that there will be retaliation. So... And... I have no words of this no-bid contracts that the township has been doing. I know that this is not the place to talk. I will still go and talk there. But to an extent, in the last three years, you guys are maintaining zero budget, zero increase and still $50 million worth of work is getting done. And I think I put my efforts in the last three years to make sure the school, you know, at least keeping a check, good or bad, yelling matches. But still, I feel that this board has been, so far, the best board that I've seen last three years that you guys have delivered. And especially under Jerry's presidency, it started well. So last year may not be great. We lost certain things from the academic perspective, but to an extent, you know, Matthews and all those people delivered well. And this year, under Shannon's leadership, and I think Shannon, kudos to you. You know, this is how a role model woman president should be. So I'm congratulating you for doing this. Unfortunately, I may not be able to be here next year because I'm moving my kid away from the school district. I'm spending a lot of money in the private schools. But keep, continue doing a good job and thank you, everybody. And Joe, you impressed me the most out of, you know, first three months. The way honesty, straightforwardness, you know, even though you and I may not be liked because of our arrogance in talking, but we are always straightforward and truthful to us. So, Mo, I miss you, buddy.
I missed you, too.
I wanted you and Jerry to win again and continue the same trend to help, at least address this overcrowding in the next two, three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Vankit.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. This board realizes and recognizes our accomplishments. That's one of the big issues that we've had. We worked real hard to make sure that the transparency is evident. And you have helped us tremendously. Thank you for your time, thank you for your spirit. There's a lot of people that just wouldn't do it. You did it, thank you. The district will miss you and your children. Thank you.
Board President, if I may ask?
Mr.?
I don't know, when you said something in the beginning, I missed it. So I don't know if you were talking about the Board of Education or the township in regards to three bids and two dropped out and one stayed? The township, okay. So they did some hanky panky there, thank you.
Yeah, and the bathroom, that was Woodrow Wilson and John Adams. That's missing the bathroom in the gym. And I believe that's USA architect, right? Okay. I just, yeah, sorry to see you, you know, you and your daughter going to another school. I hope you would have more confidence in our school. I mean, I do, my daughter actually got admitted to another school, but I decided to keep her here. So I think we're going to try, work hard to make sure this is still, you know, a good school to go to. And JP Stevens Security, you show Mr.?
Yeah, sure. You know, without compromising the protocols and pieces that we have in place with regards to security and without going into details about the student and the incident, I can assure you this and we can maybe talk after this as well. If any student isn't receiving the services that they need, they should immediately reach out to the building principal. We have a central office staff that has fully vetted this incident as well, too, and are proactively reflecting and looking at not only security in our high schools, but from a district perspective. But if students need support for psychological reasons or counseling, we 100% will not only afford that, but will be supportive and proactive with it as well, too. So I would encourage that parent to reach out. As far as remote cooking, it's definitely tough. I will tell you, from time to time, I will watch some cooking stuff, like, you know, when I have to make stuff for Mother's Day with my wife. I watch it on YouTube. It is difficult. The problem sometimes, especially with classes like that, it's finding a person that actually has a certificate to teach those cooking classes. So a lot of times, in the absence of not running that class, we do choose a remote option so that at least students can participate in that capacity. But I will tell you that our supervisor of that department, Ms. Halpin, has done a wonderful job in recruiting not only staff but for those positions and other business-level positions, but family and consumer consignors. So I think that you'll be pleasantly surprised coming up that we'll be able to secure some of those spots. But I understand what you're saying. Bobby Flay is actually really good to watch, too. Sometimes, he breaks it down. And it's good with those things, too, because you can pause it.
Cake wars.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe you could teach.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
And I think once we get some smell of vision going on, too, then you will actually know what's going on, especially when you know something is burnt or not.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Oh, Ms. Conway.
Good to see you.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. Hi, everybody. I just would like two updates. The first one is my question on JP Stevens. Have you done any bidding yet as far as the costs of JP Stevens? Because then you'd need to know your dollar figure in order to know how much you're going out to lease purchase or have you done that already? Or what is the actual timeframe for that? Is my first question. And my second one is the status of something that I've been talking about for a couple of years. The update on Lincoln Elementary School. Every time I see one of you, I ask about it, but I am not going to give up until I actually know that Lincoln Elementary addition is on completion and it's a thing of the past to even discuss what's going on with Lincoln. Those are my two items.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Toth on both of those because I believe there were discussions that just took place recently this week.
Correct, we are, we went over at the most recent Facilities Committee meeting, we went over the plaque that's going to be installed to memorialize the work and all the current board members and previous that were part of it. So that's being designed. Once that's complete, we'll pick a date for the ribbon cutting, which... I anticipate this being...
The ribbon cutting?
That...
We actually just spoke about that, so we're... We're working on a date. We're working on a date, hopefully within the next month. Yeah, and with regard to JP, yes, we have a cost estimate. Um, I think I displayed that at, at my budget meeting last month, it's 27.5, so, um, you know, we have a figure of 18 million that we'll need to go out for lease purchase for, um, for five years, so it's gonna be a combination of financing and, and capital reserve and outlay to complete the project.
Timing.
Timing, right. Oh, timing. So, yeah, so it's a, it's a, the process with that is JP's under review right now with the DOE. Um, once they get back with an approval, and maybe they're feeling kind, and they award us some rod money, and then we don't, we don't need all that, um, once we get that approval, we'll be able to come back with DMR, they'll, um, do any last modifications for the drawings and the specs. Um, we'll go out for financing shortly after that to secure our lease, much like we're gonna be doing with the ESIP, or did with the ESIP, and then we can go out to bid once we have the financing in place.
We are expecting...
I, I think we'll have a DOE approval June, late June or July. I think we could go out for the financing, um, either July or August, and, and hopefully bid the project at the latest August simultaneously. Um, that, that's what my thoughts are.
So only if you had a project plan, you could have given the exact date.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, that's why, that's the architects.
It's not you.
We're, we're on the DOE schedule with that approval, but fingers crossed, you know, that's...
Even if you had that plan, the DOE is controlling it, and, you know, politics is playing, so...
I'll get there.
Madam President?
Mr. Shi.
Yeah, I just wanna add, so if you're asking the timing of how long it's gonna take to, to complete, it's, uh, so around 18 months, once we start breaking the ground.
2025, that'll be, 2025.
Hope the weather cooperating, get it quicker. We're in, we're increasing one-third of the capacity of JP Stevens, so just keep, keep that in mind. JP has about 95, 96 classrooms, we're putting 28 of them, and it's one-third of the capacity, so think about it. It's, it's, uh, it's a, it's not a small undertaking.
Huge project.
And just to add, with, with that lease financing for JP, um, along with, you know, things like JMI, we're doing that in a, in a budget-neutral position, so that's an added benefit. I mean, it's not, we're, we're not gonna add, um, an expenditure to our budget, an additional expense, because we're encumbering the projects as we're doing them, so, you know, when we're incurring a, a cost, like a, a building, it's a one-time cost, a project's a one-time cost, so that'll free up available money for a capitalized lease payment. Yeah?
Thank you. Anybody else? Any public comments? Oh, Vanke.
Do you have first timers?
If there are any first timers, I can wait.
No.
Nah, okay. Don't see any.
So, the, two things is, uh, the tutoring program, we have, uh, around 180 students that learn, and it is going to come to an end in a month's time. So we have around close to 84 tutors, means the high schoolers and middle schoolers stepped up, and, you know, in three days, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, in two locations, North Edison and Main Library. So I hope, you know, we are willing to recognize some of those people, so if you guys are okay, we'll find out, you know, how we can actually recognize the top 20 kids who dedicated more than 20-plus hours of tutoring. So during those, you know, education time that they contributed. Then the second one that I have to really acknowledge, it's my personal observation, is, uh, kudos to Principal Dr. Valentine and the Counselor Nicole Davis. A, they not only provided the recommendations for the private schools that I'm applying, and B, the communication that they had with the parents about the graduation ceremonies, holidays, security, so I think every week I get three or four emails of information. So when I share that information from the John Adams that Dr. Valentine and Nicole Davis shares, lot of other school parents ask me that, oh, we don't get this kind of information. So I'm not saying that she's the best, but, uh, in my view, my son went there, you know, I will tell you one extra thing that I don't know whether I can share this year. My son studied in John Adams, Valentine was his principal, and his common is say, even though he was in private school, it was reviewed by the, she's an English in PhD, she still reviewed and gave a great comments. So now my son got into very, three honor colleges with best scholarships possible, so I'm revealing it because Dr. Valentine goes out of her way to do those things. It, I don't know whether it's legal or not, but still, she still tells me that...
She doesn't charge, sir.
She doesn't charge, but she still tells me that, oh, can your daughter go to JP? I'll be still there to support her, even though I'm not in JP. I think that kind of positive attitude that she always tried to convince me. Same thing that Nicole Davis, that where for the EHS temp programs or the other Woodbridge or Edison High, I think that counseling team has done a fantastic job of communicating with the parents. If today I put the request, the next day morning, the records are uploaded. Same thing with the private schools, I uploaded to seven schools, and all the recommendations and all the things are up, up, uploaded into the portal the next day morning. I think that kind of dedication, I don't know how many people really see it from your position, Dr. Aldrally, but it's a, it means a lot to us. Whereas some school council says that, oh, just let us know, we will take care of it, but they will not give any update. But I do get, not only me, that any parents of J, John Adams gets an update that, oh, it is done, so-and-so did, and there is a proper audit trial that has been established over there. So hope you guys realize and replicate some of the good things over there, and last but not least, I still can't believe, Shannon, that, I know you guys may not engage that builder, if there is anything that you guys can do to address those bathrooms in the gym, because you're spending millions, and you don't want, we don't want to be laughing stark that, oh, you have multi-million dollar gyms, but you don't have restrooms in those, or bathrooms in that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll look into that.
Madam President?
And Mr. Shi.
Uh, I think you made a wrong decision of not putting your kids through JP Stevens, okay? She can still come back after a year, all right?
Right. Board President?
Uh, Mr. Mo.
Can you just make sure that you send us, send, uh, the email to the soup and myself as well as other board members in regards to the recognition, recognition of those students that are volunteering their time with the highlights? Thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely recognize them, screen volunteer work, and I wish you can still come back to our meetings, unless you're moving out of town, 'cause you didn't do this for your own kids, I know, for all these past years. You cares, and you come here and make comments and suggestions, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Your dedication is very well spoken of. Everybody that gets the information, they are very happy that you do that. You don't have to, but you do it on behalf of all the parents, and I thank you for that too.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, motion to end, public comments?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I need to read this.
No, that would...
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adjourned to a confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, personnel matters, health insurance contract dispute, former staff and student litigations, motion to adjourn to a privileged session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, I'll see you, we don't expect to come out, right? So we'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you.